Lindsay has pointed out that the Wellness Committee is going to be tabled because Kimberly Wally has conferences to make, so it will be moved to the December 16th meeting. And then Lindsay will make sure to let Brooke know to get that on at that time. Notice on your agenda, 9.3 has been added to go into closed session for consideration of purchase of property. Is there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
No.
No? Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And there is nothing down for public comment or trouble recognition. So we will, like I said, under reports, the wellness is tabled. And so we'll go on to roof monitoring. Sandman Structural Engineers is here.
So Justin and Mitch had been working with us last winter, as everybody remembers. And we talked at that time, and we got through the spring that we really need to look at so that we don't have this happen again with some type of monitoring. So, and you're talking, if you recall also with JLG, their plans with the project is that our structural engineers, their recommendation is to have Sandman excavating. Sandman Structural Engineering. So, is it Schoenberg?
Shaneberg.
Shaneberg. So Mitch Okerson and Justin are the ones that have been working within a pass. So this is basically a chance for freely of operations tonight following the meeting to hear about what the possibilities might be, get an idea on Ball Park on numbers and what else not. And then what would be the potential recommendations at the December meeting to bring back. Okay? Justin, the floor is yours.
All right. Do you want me to?
Sure.
I don't have a lot of copies of these, but I just figured everyone could share them.
Yep, we can share.
So this was a map we put together. Just showing the different areas in pink and red where we found that so much snow on the roof that those areas of the roof were considered unsafe, and we closed those spots down. And as we worked through that data, finding different areas that were unsafe, we decided just to close those school down because I could see there were major corridor areas and other things. So in order to not get to that point, next winter, we're proposing some type of snow monitoring system. You know, this could be as simple as, a lot of these areas are at roof steps where you have like the gym stepping down 10 feet to a lower roof. Well, we could just come up with a snow gauge, and you could paint a vertical ruler right on the wall. And then every week, after every snowstorm, someone just goes up there and looks at the level to see, okay, is it, you know, lower portion could be in green showing that's the safe zone, could have a yellow zone that's caution, and then a red zone that if the snow is up in that level, get the snow off the roof. So we've done it before on some other buildings on, you know, it's kind of a short-term thing until you can figure out what you can do long-term if the roof can handle a lot of snow. This past winter was obviously a very, very bad winter, so it's not a normal thing by any means, but there is a merit of concern that was quite a bit past the factor of safety that built the building code. So depending on, I don't see this as being a super exhaustive exercise. I mean, we can make it that way and check every single roof on this entire school, or we could keep it more simple, and we know the areas that were in rough shape, and we just focus on those, and we just get the gauges on those parts of the roof. So we're open either one, but I think that could be done relatively easy if it's just those certain areas that we, you know, can work with the maintenance crew and come up with a system to do the painting on those steps, so.
Was there structural damage to the building because of all that snow?
We did not see any structural damage. Now, not everything is exposed. That's a good question. The areas we did see, we didn't see any damage or anything. I mean, some, I think we would've known if there would've been something there, but it was, you know, the building code has safety factors input, so yeah, some of these were considered above what the code allows you to put on for pressure, but they maybe were still under the safety factor. But then there were some that were still over that yet too, which is pretty alarming. But as far as I know, I don't think anything actually failed. It's just, you know, the code from, this is obviously many, many years of additions. Well, 30, 40, 50 years ago, they didn't have the knowledge they do on snowdrifts like they do now, where sometimes they weren't designed for snowdrifts. It was just, here's your snow, it'll be designed to repurpose, no matter if there's a 20-foot higher building next to it. So things have changed, but you don't have to go upgrade your older buildings for that. They're kind of grandfathered in, but obviously we see an area that's concerning, we're going to fix it because of kids, of course, so.
Would it be, would it be true, would we expect that if there was any, let's say, cracks into, you know, as far as on the roof, what else not because of, because we did not see any water damage at all, you know? We didn't have anything like that over the summer, you know, through any of the rainstorms or any of that. So, I mean, would that, I would assume that would be one of the signs that if something did get right to that pressure point, that we should've seen something else that would've shown up over the summer, or?
Yeah, I mean, some areas like, you know, some of the steel roofs you have, if you have a lot of loading on, there's a lot of deflection in the roof. And if you have a drop ceiling, you probably would see tiles that are dislodged, different things like that. So you probably would've saw some of that. I think other areas have all, some of them have hard, I think, sheetrock ceilings, there you probably would be right, probably would see some cracking happen, things like that. So most of those areas that I'm aware of, at least I think, I think you're right, I think you could've saw some of those signs.
Because I'm assuming this would be a short-term plan, just from the standpoint that when we think about the elementary gym and that whole area, the one area that we've got that has still some wood.
I added like 2x6.
2x6 supports.
If you need a snow on it.
I think that is in that elementary side, we're 194 in some of that. So even if we go into it, we're just going to make sure that that is always, you know, they get the snow blower up there and get the stuff off of those areas. And there's really no reason why, especially over on this side of the building, that's right, you know, with the parking lot right there, that they can't go up there and make sure that after storms, because again, that's pretty low, that's low bearing anyway. I think, if I remember, it shouldn't have much on that area, and it's right on the edge. So it shouldn't be hard to maintain keeping the snow off of that, now that we've got more help in the maintenance department, and we got the snow blowers, so.
Well, we just need to make sure that there's a checklist that somebody actually initials that, yep, they went up there and did that. Somebody's out of town for vacation, and all of a sudden, there's no initials on there, and another storm comes, and then the first one didn't get off, so.
I'll guarantee you until I'm done here, after we have snowstorms.
Well, this is the first time, I mean, obviously, we've ever shut down school, to my knowledge, one, since I was in high school here, and I've been out of high school for 25 years, and they, this is the first time ever. So obviously accountability is the key factor in avoiding structural damage to our school.
We leave one of the snow blowers up there.
Yeah. And I think they've left, but I'll find out, we'll find out from James, because the plan was to have a couple of them left up there in that maintenance room. No reason not to. Just drain them, and then just bring the gas, you know, bring the fuel, no big deal, so.
But I like where, do the color coding. That's, I think, just the most clear.
Easy visual.
Oh, very visual. I like that idea the best.
Yeah, that way it tells you too, if you're getting close.
Yeah.
A lot, you know, this past winter, it wasn't just because of one snowstorm, of course. It was many snowstorms built on top of each other. So even, even if one does get missed on one snowstorm, well, you should know, you know, the next time you check it, okay, it's up near the red now, because last night it was all the way down with green here.
So I'm going to put you on the spot since this Ball Park idea, cost.
For our engineering, I mean, if we keep it simple, and we're not going through the entire school, which is kind of what we've done already, and just provide some real simple drawings, maybe work with the maintenance crew, I can even come out here, you know, find spots on the walls when they do it, we just do it with some easy painting or something. I'd say around 2,500 bucks maybe for us to do the engineering on that and help with the drawings.
You guys comfortable?
Absolutely.
It's a lot cheaper than having to shut down school and worry about a roof collapsing.
I'm St. Francis, so I know that you're comfortable with all of that.
Yes. It's a long spring. We're still trying to recover yet from all the bird season that was spring, so. And that's why, I mean, yeah, it was an extreme winter, there's no doubt, and I hope we don't have another one like it, but these were more important.
Well, we have built the school board, Operations Committee following tonight's meeting, and then we have a meeting tomorrow. And we'll make sure that we add that to that agenda tomorrow, because we've got an Operations Committee meeting tomorrow. So it's perfect timing, and then we can start putting the plan together. We were talking earlier, this isn't something we have to get in place before the first snowstorm, and which probably will be later this weekend, the way it sounds, but.
Oh, I know.
But like you said, December, January.
Yeah.
So if we get everything done over Christmas break, we'll be in good shape.
Okay.
You should have a lot of the data already, don't you, about what the snow, or what the loads are on these different roofs?
Yeah, that's what helps with this. I can go through my old calculations that I, from that day, and probably do some double checking, because it was chaotic that day, wouldn't be made sure, he was on the roof, and we were FaceTiming each other, trying to figure out where he was or where the snow was. So I just need to go through all that again and make sure we're good, but yeah, it's not a huge process by any means to do what we have to do. And some of these areas too, if we do find out, you know, with how much snow can happen or occur on that roof, and it is way over the building code safety factor, I mean, as part of the additions later down the road, if we find out, you know what, to go up there and always remove snow, we could, you know, work with Comstock and be like, okay, to reinforce these joints, since the ceiling's all torn up, remodeling that classroom anyways, what it costs just to reinforce that roof? And we can deal with those things later on down the road when that process comes, so.
Anybody have any questions? Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And then, everybody, did you get a chance to read your World's Best Workforce that was sent to us? Are they going to present?
Read might be a wrong word, but I'd like to understand.
And so, and we have Heidi and Margot are going to take, and they did, they took the lead with us in the first place. So all I'm going to, all I'm going to remind the board of is, is the way that we broke this down is there's basically five components to the World's Best Workforce. One is ready for okay, and then read well by grade three. And then we've got the college and career readiness, and we've got the graduation rates. And then all of the levels have to look at, you know, where do you have your gaps, issues? So we break it down administratively, and when I say we, I'm taking credit, because the principals do all this. They're the ones putting all this together. So they basically divide it up, which things are more elementary related, which ones are more 612 related, and then they put all this together. So it's all their credit.
All right, well, I can start. I know that the elementary piece is right at the beginning, you've got middle and preschool in the middle, and then a little bit of just first class, that was at the end. So we talked about, at the end of the level, how we can look at the improvement and increase achievement of all of our kids. One of our first, one of the first pieces is all kids are ready for school. For our goal this year, our district will increase the percent of children's screen between the third and fourth grade to 45% by this full year, and it was the, at 48%, all our district has 48% of members. We met that goal for all students ready for school. And we were talking about our early learning programs, and those, the programs that Roseanne Owens does, and the stuff that she uses, and the people that she has, she really focuses on that goal and that readiness piece. So I feel very comfortable with that piece, that we're getting more kids into our preschool programs. The next piece is all students in third grade reading, grade level literacy. So again, the MDE or the Department of Ed is read well at third grade, so we're really focusing on putting those title interventions, we're putting the special service interventions, the classroom interventions. Right now, really, to third, reading course, enough like K through third grade. So we did talk about, or we did look at the region states course on K through third grade, and we did say we wanted to go from 63.8% in 2018 to 71.8%, which is a very lofty goal. We did not make that goal in our one year. But what I'm doing right now is I'm working with a region, a center of excellence through Lakes Country Co-op, and I'm piloting a program regarding the academic achievement with our elementary kiddos. We're focusing on the Glendon site right now, because I'm piloting the information and piloting the process for implementation in the district in the future. So I have a team that works for us and myself right now, and I talk with the other admin in the district regarding this, and we talk about the data. The team is from MDE, it's a grant-based team, so they're not like MDE people, but they're hired through grant. They have all of our data, MCA, STARS assessments, they have MS, Minnesota students, or MSS information, so they're compiling it all. And what I'm doing, working with the mentor, is really looking at where we're lacking in our data. And I'm going to do it district-wide, we're going to do it district-wide, but I'm just going to focus on, I will be the deliverer of information right now, because in the transition years and with the referendum and stuff, pilot that with our elementary staff here, and then take that format, that framework for what they're working on with me, and share it with the admin team. So it's something, I'll be looking at district information and Glendon melting. The reason we get this is because we're a targeted services, we're targeted school, intervention school, and what that means is we have a group of students, a subgroup of students, a Hispanic population, who are underperforming in targeted services, or in reading, writing, math, and attendance. So our focus is that subgroup of kiddos, so that's why we get the grant money to do, and that's to do this, and that's kind of how I got hooked up with her, and then I sub-couple district in, and then our referendum passed. So I'm taking a lot of the information out in piloting that piece, that framework for our elementary degree in complete districts. So I think that's going to really help with our, with looking at where we're missing stuff, our curriculum, all at that third grade, read well by third grade level. Oh, the middle, the middle of our.
So before we get into the middle of all that, and so you were aware, so that target goal, that was the overall, one thing to remember is as sites, we actually do perform overall, in most cases, better than state average. I can't, do you call it what the state average? Right now, in comparison to the state average, in overall demographic, we're over state average.
Yes, in the math and reading, we're over state average.
It's, the reason they're a targeted site is because they have to break it down for all the demographic groups, and if you're lower than, if your gap is too much for particular groups, then you become targeted support. So you can be, as a district, above state average and still be a targeted. So the goal to get to 70 overall is really lofty when we're already above the state average.
But I like that they're not forgotten and overlooked.
Yes.
Absolutely. On the next piece is the district achievement gap. We look at free-reduce lunch, and we look at special ed services, and what we do to compare the non-free-reduce kiddos, the free-reduce kiddos, to see that, we always want to see the gap between the two decrease. We want to see that getting closer together. And in both, our goal was to decrease from 15.3% in 2018 to 13.2% with the free and reduce, the gap closing. We did reduce, or actually, we did increase that, the gap to 17.7% in 2019, so the gap did get bigger. And again, looking at the information that we're looking at district-wide, includes the subgroup of free-reduce lunch, and how can we best support that with the services that we have, and the data-driven instruction. And then the proficiency gap between the sped and non-sped students on all accountability, state, oh, that was reading, sorry. My safety for special ed, we will decrease, again, that same achievement gap piece, 25.6% in 18 to 24% in 2019, and we did increase that gap again, so that gap's getting bigger between our special ed kiddos and our regular ed kiddos, to actually 37.3% proficiency in 2019. So again, using that data that we're looking at, and we're compiling right now to close that gap. In math, special ed, the goal was to go from 25, 26% in 18 to 24% proficiency in 2019. We, again, did not meet that, but we can, this is just, this is looking at the specialized subgroup, 37.3% proficiency in 2019, and we were hoping for, we were right from 25, 26 to 37. So again, it's that subgroup of kiddos. We are above the state average, but we take the subgroups into consideration, so we are always targeting intentionally looking at that data. And then the math accountability test will, this is a good, this is good stuff. Math and accountability test will decrease from 17.4 in the gap to 16.5, and we actually went from 16.5 to 17.7 proficiency in 2018. So again, it didn't get, it didn't get big, a lot bigger, but it stayed pretty consistent with all the changes and stuff with our free-reduce population getting bigger. That's a, that's a good, that's a good thing. And, you have any questions about any of that?
How do you come up with the percentage of the increase that you want to do from one year to the next?
Well, there's a formula that we're doing in Pittsburgh School about how to do that, and it's usually about 7%, like the percentile-wise. But you look at, with kids, you look at what you have for services, you look at all of those things, and you make that goal. Now, when we set goals at the Glendon Belt Elementary Site this year, we really looked at the data, where we are, where we are with the curriculum, and as grade-level teams, we made the goals very not attainable, or our standards, but really wrapping around that data piece, where we can really focus on what is, we're looking at the kids that are coming in or that came into us from grade to grade, and we're really looking at what is a good, if we wanted to see all kids be successful in raising their achievement, what would that look like? So it's, again, we say 7%, that's what, you know, that's what I've always done with those things, but those are those lofty kind of goals that you feel like you have to make, and I'd rather be transparent and say, here it is, this is what we can make, and this is what we can do, looking at our kids. So that's kind of how we work in, at the elementary level with our goals. Anything else about that?
Or some of the, compared to the proficiency levels, some of the gap, is that some of the kids that are non-sped or non-free and reduced get higher, or is it the, I mean, the actual levels themselves, is there any information on that?
I don't know the answer to that, off the top of my head, I'd have to research it, but that's a good question.
I do. It's a fact, yep. Here on ahead, because what's happening is, we're seeing the growth with our overall group of kids. They're making some gains and going up, but we're seeing a stagnant growth with, so the gap is widening, even though they may not be losing and dropping much, but they're just not as improving as much, and so that's what's widening that gap.
A couple of things that I'd like to point out on the achievement gap is, when we take the MCA test, which there's a lot of weight put on those with these percentages, you have to remember that we're a one-day shot. I've been doing these MCA's for a long time, and the accommodations are getting less and less for students in special ed. So when I first started, there was a variety of different things that could be done, and there's basically large print for those that need that for their vision, but there's also the main one is small group setting. And to be honest with you all, to me, that's not always fair, because some of the kids with the abilities that they have, I think the test would be more reflective if there was more accommodations like there used to be. And they just have gotten away from that. So that's one of the things that I always take a little bit of grain of salt when I look at the percentage, the gap, because I do think that kids excel at different things, and not everybody excels at math with me, maybe they are going to be living in a different trade area or something like that. So that's, that's something that, I guess from the heart, that always bothers me a little bit. The other thing with the population too, is that, I think, one of the things that people don't realize is that we, if a kid moves into our district during our testing window, and they haven't been tested at another district, so another district can test them all the way through, or then move in during our window, then we test them, and their results, you know, are there. So there's just a lot of different factors that go into these, and some of the things that, I like better the read well by third grade and those things, because I think they take multiple tests and things into consideration, whether than some of these proficiency gaps. I think it's very important to focus on that. I think there's a lot of great things going on in the schools that maybe aren't measured by these tests.
Piggybacking off that, Heidi, we do have a percentage, the percentages of our kids opting out of these statewide tests is getting greater, and if they opt out of the test, district-wide, we don't get credit, we get a zero credit, it's like they get a D if it does not meet. So that's affecting our percentile. Like Heidi said, with EL, we do have a special test for our EL, kids are in the learner test, but we do test, and that doesn't count towards our MCA keys, but if they're a different, if they're at a certain level in the EL world, they still take our MCA tests, and that's counted, no matter where they come from, it's English only. And we're getting a greater population of kiddos that don't speak English, and that's just, that's just the road coming from the Morehead area. So again, there's so much put on these goals, and we're not, you know, we're all for the, you know, go, we'll go, but we have to take them into consideration, and kind of those ropes, those ins and outs of like, you know, the newspaper doesn't report when they report test scores.
I don't think it always reflects other strengths that kids have.
Yep, exactly.
I'd be curious to see in a few years, with our elementary schools coming together, you know, the services that the children are provided, and the opportunities that are more consistent, you know?
It's so exciting.
Yeah. It'll be interesting to see.
There's a lot of different numbers that are not quite enough, not big enough to offer to roll with, which will be solved quite well too.
And that's, you know, it's one of the reasons that we've been having those discussions, and now that we're through the referendum, and this one came up again today, you know, we're at that point that we need to have just an administrative work session where we can allocate, here's all the pots of money. Again, it shouldn't matter what pot of money it came out of to provide the interventions for the kids, but take all of that to figure out then what are the interventions that we can do to help the kids. So we just haven't been able to do that before, but now we definitely have more ones. So you got two more, the college and career readiness, and.
Yeah, it won't take very long, but the all students career caliber type regulation, we really see that as a pre-K, pre-12 goal, but it's more focused on the 612 maybe. We start in sixth grade, really hitting them hard with career exploration, learning about who they are, the world of work, which, there's a lot of what you might consider soft skills, and those of us that supervise people understand what that means, but there's a lot of soft skills that we try to work on. I just had to write a letter today talking about whether a particular new goal focuses on the whole child, and not just academic piece, but there's a lot of that. So with this goal, we are looking at what type of things are we doing to prepare our students. And I think something that's really involved with this is with the curricula, and some of the things that are going to be happening with the referendum, I can see this goal changing more next year. It's very similar to the goal we had last year, it's a way, and I may have to push it a little bit, but that makes sense, and a year from now, it'll look different, I think. But for me, what I would like to look at the goal more obviously is that I hope that we are. we are, the kids are learning enough about themselves, getting enough basic skills and knowledge, so that when they hit that, that year of graduation, they know who they are and what they want to do. And having a freshman daughter, I'll tell you what, you know, it's, it really hits you how it's different for them, and, and we try to do a lot of things through that. You need to look at those if you have any questions afterwards. The last goal is DGA high school and senior graduation rate of a higher or of ninety-two percent or higher, I should say, I don't want to play story with that. And it should say of ninety-two percent or higher in twenty, twenty, we, that last year, are we at ninety-one point two, so it just fell a little bit short of that goal. It all, it all works together, read well by third grade, closing that achievement gap, getting kids excited about school, six through twelve, engaged, that they want to be there and do well, it all comes together, in my opinion, in this final goal. And so, we don't want to be at ninety-two percent, we want to be at a hundred percent where kids are excited and ready, and ready and want to tap that next level. And so, I certainly am not, I feel just as obligated as Wade does for the nine, twelve, as in six, eight, eight, getting them ready, we need to send them over there to be successful, so it's just as much on us as it is on the high school staff. But we, I, I hope that we can continue with that. We talked about some of the ways that they're going to do that, they asked me some good questions down there in the bottom, what data to use to identify needs, and we talked about using MCAs in starter testing. We look at their success in courses, what courses are they struggling in, what, and what, what are those needs, are they instructional needs, are they course offerings, are they delivery methods, there's tons of different things you can look at there. What strategies are in place to support this goal, and how well are you implementing your strategies, and how do you know whether or not it's something you may promise to achieve. So those are really good questions, guiding questions to look at when you are analyzing that. Any questions? What are those?
Heidi, Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when they, when they come up with their percentage from MDE, that's based on whether they graduated in four years from the time they entered ninth grade.
Yeah.
So that's something that, just for distinction, we definitely, that class of such and such when they entered ninth grade may graduate at ninety-eight, but it's just that they didn't get done in exactly four years. And especially as we look at our clientele going back and forth between places, and now we're getting more in the country and in their fifth, sixth year.
And like circumstances.
That's playing into it.
If they're going to fight and get through, then this may not be in that four years.
Yep.
Okay, go on, do your part.
We talked about ninety, ninety percent of, what, you know, I think about small schools, you know, all the eighteen-year-olds that grew up in the small, but we don't really have that situation anymore, so what's the percentage of kids from the start of the ninth grade?
That's, I mean, they, they take it from, from the time when they look at, okay, what group of kids did you have ninth, because it starts right when they hit ninth grade, the first Mars contact with ninth grade, and so then it'll look at your demographics of who are your present ones, and if, even if they don't finish with you, you still get them to count against you. So when they go back and forth between the school districts, their Mars number shows, starts at the full digit of twenty-one sixty-four. So even if every one of our kids that is attending here actually graduates, we may not have a hundred percent. Because if they transfer to another school district, they still take their twenty-one sixty-four number to wherever they go. And if, so if they go to Morehead and they don't make it in four years, it still counts against DGF. So that's a tricky one with that graduation piece. Every high school principal hates, hates it because of that, you know?
Do these programs for high-performing students, I mean, as far as accelerated classes or advanced programs, does that be sort of things that are in the, the-
Yes, so that, I think a misconception of Abbott, that Abbott elective course is probably for, for students that you're thinking that may be more in the middle of the road, CSDs could be doing better, that type of course, in the high school, but the Abbott strategies are really best teaching strategies, best instructional practices. And so, they definitely are for what, as my teachers put it, the best teaching practices that they're all put together in this program that they deliver. For example, one of the biggest ones is WICHER, which is teaching writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and leading. We started doing a contest amongst our kids, our teachers, that's saying who's implementing those strategies, because they are best teaching practices. So the Abbott class is probably meant for those students, and maybe they need some more help, becoming successful to push them to the next level, but the Abbott School Y, which are strategies, is for across all instructional. They should be using it in an AP honors course, again, and also in a, maybe a math class for the kids who are struggling more, they should be used across the district.
And is that starting when they're little?
Well, that's a good question, because we're working on, on some of that.
We're working on, we're working on green, I attended the Abbott Summer Institute this year for fifth grade, us from St. Cloud, I have experiences with that Abbott piece. So we're trying to, and now that we know that the referendum is going to, that it's passed, we're going to start looking at how we can get fifth grade on board with that. And then when you're thinking about gifted and talented and accelerated classrooms in our elementaries, just like we differentiate for our kiddos that are struggling or have disabilities or learning disabilities or other ways situations, we do that with our higher-level kids, too, in-class teachers do that differentiation and those gifted interventions. So they look at that data by the progress monitoring through the STAR system through the MCAs, if they get a flag on that, and they say, well, how can I make this tougher? And it's not just giving more homework, it's upping the rigor. We think about, you know, I'm not going to give somebody that's mastering multiplication another sheet on multiplication, we up the rigor, and that's what we've really been talking about site leadership, is how can we up the rigor and not just kind of say, oh, here's more homework if you're gifted and talented, let's just make, let's make it better. And then with our, with our interventions and our special ed and all of these special services that we provide, it gives our teachers what we call aid time, enrichment or intervention, AI time, EI time, whatever it is. So, thank you, yes, EI, there's lots of A's and E's and I's. But that gives teachers more time to focus on not just, you know, you know, the boosting, 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 but it's also going up and boosting, 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 too. So that's what, at the elementary level, that's what we're really working hard on is, yep, we're supporting, we're supporting, we want the kiddos that are lower to be making their gains, but we also need to look at our gifted and talented program, programming too, and remember, as teachers, we need to push this kid, to push the rigor of what we're doing, not just adding more work to be done, because that point is, doesn't make kids smarter.
So there's not really any ramifications from Minnesota if you don't meet these goals? Or do you just have to fill out a report and-
It's, it's pretty much the report. You know, and part of, thinking of the ramification, why it's part of that, that Hispanic subgroup that we work with, target support services from, we actually get that help relates country and regions and centers excellence to reach, they want us to be successful. So that's how we, you know, kind of got hooked up to begin with, so they look at, you know, those, those gaps and what we can do for those, like, subgroups to make kids successful.
Because all of these numbers are, are locally set. Yeah. You know, so it's, the, the only time that you, you run into is, is more on the system accountability, that whole thing about targeted, you know, if you're a targeted one, and if you're, if you're running into where you have consecutive years and by federal legislation, you know, it used to be no child left behind, that if you hit so many years in a row. So again, that's even changed, of course, now with the new federal regulation. So this is more of a local, local decision.
Do they have any questions, further questions?
I'd love to know if you ever have any questions about any of that curriculum academics or anything, we're always doing the talk about it and the plan, and I'll go if you understand, and so appreciate it, guys.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate you guys, thank you. All right, moving on to six point four, board committee reports.
I don't wellness report. I feel like I have to report every board meeting we have, guys. That's kind of funny, all right. Anyway, Kimberly Wally is going to come in December and give a comprehensive talk on the Wellness Committee for their action plan. But just to give you guys just a couple of things, what we discussed, they'd asked me to kind of give them an update on the referendum and, you know, what, what, how we'd be moving forward, and just explain to them, we're going to have timelines and, you know, several opportunities for site leadership and employees to bring forward their ideas. Tracy and I were informed by ship that we have to have a mother's room, we learned something new, so that was at that meeting. The biggest thing that I'm super excited about is that Chelsea, from Food Services there, and was sharing with us that our Grab and Go Breakfast for the high schoolers, they have about a hundred and fifty kids are serving a day for breakfast, so I think that's wonderful, and that's one of those cards she got with one of those grants, and she's actually going to be writing a new grant, and I, I didn't write that down, do you happen to remember Tracy Appan, who it was through, was that through ship or was that-
Sure, all these.
Who, all these, had a grant, so Chelsea, we all know her and her magic of grant writing, so cross our fingers, she would like to get a bigger card so she can serve more kids and give more offerings. But currently on this, Grab and Go Breakfast, they provide whole grain Pop Tarts and crustables, other items that are frequently offered include French toast sticks and Frappuccino drinks, and the kids love it. So, that's awesome, and we reviewed healthy winter party ideas for the elementary teachers, Tracy gave a community ed update, and really ship, there is a ship update, for that, I'm going to bring it to the policy committee, and I can't remember who's on policy.
Me, Raleigh and Laura.
They have a tobacco-free board policy, a public, the Public Health Law Center has a more comprehensive policy than our district, and we have pretty much the MSBA one. So she would, she asked me to pass that along to the policy committee, which I will give you guys to read over when you guys have a policy meeting. Ashton Tegason and Jacob Shonboard came and talked about vaping in the school and how the student leaders have met with Clay County Public Health and are working on some anti-vaping stuff, and if you turn around, I see they've been busy doing something here regarding trying to get the word out to students why, you know, you shouldn't vape. So, that was wonderful, so I'll bring that policy to you guys. And then they went over staff wellness ideas for holidays, they're going to do January, they're going to do their healthy habits bingo from last year, and I think we usually get it, so if anybody wants to do that, I will hand those out. But that was, that was about it, so they're a really fun group of people, and they have, they always want to find ways at our school to improve wellness, and so, that was about it, anybody have any questions?
I think the Grab and Go at those schools is very popular, too.
Is it?
I think we're serving all the same amount.
I think it's fantastic that kids are taking the opportunity to get breakfast here if they don't have time at home. So that's wonderful, and Chelsea's just done an amazing job with those carts, and she said if she can get the grant for this bigger cart, you know, she will try to find a way, now with the referendum passing, having carts on both ends of the school, so middle school and high school, and she's like, I don't know how that's going to look, but she wants to continue to grow this, because the kids are utilizing it, so if they're going to utilize it-
You have a cart.
Yeah, you have a cart, but she was saying in her meeting, she wants to make sure that when the two, like, the junior high and high school come together-
Yeah.
-that she still, you know, has enough space to offer to, to do both, yeah.
Because I think that's a big piece of it, is we roll ours right down where they are.
Yeah, yeah, she said it, and the two students that were there said, yeah, it's just a huge thing in the mornings, kids are lining up for it, so I think that's fantastic, and, yeah. We talked a little bit about the snack program, no one had, no teachers had any complaints about snacks, you know, in the past, say, Chelsea keeps mixing them up, and kids seem to be liking the choices that they put on there this year. Just had one instance where all the bananas were black in the middle, so she dealt with that. So that was a bad day. But other than that, yeah.
What, what time of the day are those carts open, and what's the cost on that?
The, the carts are open in the morning, I think they start-
Seven forty-five, is it?
Yeah, seven forty-five to maybe eight fifteen, eight twenty.
We sort of rate up until our bell rings, because we have the last bus that gets here at eight twenty, and so we sort of rate up until four.
And I, I'm not sure on the cost, Ronnie, I would assume it's around two dollars, pretty, I think it's pretty reasonable, and I don't know if it's per item, I'm assuming it's per item.
If you think about, like, all the cart, they sell those on crustables for super cheap, I would say it's probably, yeah, for a whole breakfast, it's probably like two bucks.
Yeah, I think it's pretty reasonable.
It is very reasonable.
Yeah, and I know when I first got on the school board and she talked about this cart, I think she maybe had forty kids that were using, utilizing it, so it's grown considerably in three years, so, yeah. So that was nice to hear.
Moving on to you.
Just tech committee, Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Technical difficulty, I wasn't on this, but I didn't know about it, but I do, I did get the notes. Essentially, they went over just a few issues, schoolology, the program itself was acquired, the company was acquired by another entity, we don't know what the impact of that will be, but it's something they're monitoring. The paper cut feedback slash results, I'm not sure what paper cut is, but my suspicion is it's a program that's used on the printing side of things, and there have been some various difficulties, and it sounds like there's a little bit of training that's needed, so they're working on that. The student devices, apparently some students have figured out how to download apps onto their computers by using their own personal Gmail account or Hotmail account or whatever they're doing, and so they're thinking of ways to counteract that and shut that off. But they do have some apparent issues with doing that, it sounds like a technological thing for those kids in ninth through twelfth grades.
Well, they just shut it down so they can't have multiple G-mails on, because, yeah, I've, I've already heard the complaint from my daughter, because, you know, she has her own Gmail account, and so she'll be working on some term papers and whatever it's not through the one, and all of a sudden, now she gets home and, so, basically what they have to, the student machines themselves can only have the one Gmail account. If they're looking on somebody else's machine, they can have another Gmail account, but of course, we have everything set up through the school's Gmail accounts, and we can watch over those things. But of course, if they log in with something else, then the app actually can go on to there, and so they can be logged in and putting these other apps on there, so-
You know, that almost sounds like a class that can be offered in middle school, high school, where these kids will be in the tech program to-
Oh, they're, kids have been-
-build walls, and, you know, because they're the ones that know how to get around everything, so if you can get those guys focusing on how to protect all of our stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Teach them how to be anti-hackers.
Yes, yes, yes.
Stuff has been going on for-
You know, it's like that catch me if you can, where that guy was counterfeiting all those checks, and let's just get them working for us.
Right. Another issue had to do with employee device issues and the smart boards, and apparently there's some things that were a little, the Chrome boxes were clunky with touch technology on the smart boards, so that's something they're trying to, to deal with, does not sound like it's something that we're going to invest money in.
Okay, so the smart boards aren't working?
Well, they're just-
Smart is-
-got repression very quickly, and so some of the touch technology, my understanding is it's not-
Well, and, so part of the issue and principals have been at it, I mean, Jake and I, Jake has brought up for, what, a year plus, smart is no longer going to be, what is it, the, the technology is changing. It's kind of like somebody who wants to have updates for the old Windows ninety-eight, and at some point you got to break down and say, no, I'm going to use the new Windows.
Because they're no longer providing services.
Because they're no longer providing services, and that's what's happening with some of the smart technology. And that's what's happening with some of the smart technology. So we have a lot of staff members that have made up particular and they want to, it's like having, somebody having a teacher that has particular notes and they want to have that same textbook with, because those notes are associated with that. Sometimes you're going to have to just update and, and accept the fact that the technology is changing and you're going to have to make changes with it. So that's what we're dealing with is the, the smart boards themselves, the technology is older technology and so they won't be supporting a lot of the, the older smart documents that people created. Okay, that's going away.
With that, Brian, can I just say?
Yep.
Um, part of what we do is best practice is teachers differentiate and look at what our kids need at that time. And I think there's a little bit of resistance coming to from people that have used the same notes for 20 years.
Change.
But saying whatever for 20 years and that, that in itself is not best practice. Our elementary teachers and our middle school and our high school teachers, they need to be updating for the kids that they have. I think there's just a little bit of that and with the theater moving smart notebook, they're kind of losing that, well, I did this five years ago on the same day, I'm going to do it again today. We're going to, we're going to be pushing some people out of their boxes. And when we push people out of their boxes in education, there gets to be that uncomfortableness with the change as well. So I think, and I talked to Jake quite a while about that piece, you know, if they're new writing and reading curriculum and the new math stuff that we're piloting right now, a lot of it is, we don't need smart notebook and it's, it's all there for us already. Um, so we might as well utilize what we're already buying and kind of make the transition happen.
It's like, it's like the discussion we've had a number of years ago, somebody likes to teach dinosaurs unit and they may have the greatest dinosaur unit that there was ever created and they've got it perfected. At some point in time, you have to let the dinosaur unit go. And so that's what some of this is, you know, it's just helping people with the transition and so.
And that's pretty much it. They take really good notes of the technology committee.
Yes, they do.
And I'm going to go to the meeting in February, so.
And all of the, all the notes, of course, and what else, not the minutes are, are on the drive. Everybody has access for them, like all those other committees, so they organize them well.
Anyone else?
Just actually, sorry, one thing. Shout out to two groups in our school. One is the DGF Middle School and, oh, them too, yes.
Culture and Climate. Culture and Climate did an awesome thing for our teachers. Aren't you glad we're having a short week? I'm sure they are. Um, DGF Middle School, High School Student Council, Fill the Dome, they had a great turnout for that, that looked awesome. And then we had our theater kids did a play this weekend, they did great. Almost Maine was the play and they did fabulous, so.
Officer Lee and I were taped to the walls until about two thirty.
Yes. You met the goal for Fill the Dome, so you get duct taped to the wall.
We'll get, we'll order some super glue to help with it.
Say nobody could put it across the mall.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to six point five, the superintendent report.
I'll try to keep mine short. Um, so you may have received your property tax statements. You'll notice that they, again, the meeting for the sixteenth is scheduled for here. We'll keep it here. We will put out, I'll work with Tracy and Jake because we'll have to put out information. The county, Lilly readily admits their mistake. I mean, we even double-checked it. I brought this to Sandy right when I got here. Everybody's got their statements and it says that Truth in Taxation, School Board Conference Room, Delaware, so that same thing we went through again, we had the same issue. They didn't update it. And I can tell you for a fact, Jeannie called them again right after the referendum vote just to double-check. So I talked to Lilly today, there's really nothing they can do about it. Now, another thing that you may hear about with the tax statements or one thing we'll just have to be prepared for when people get their tax statements in March, the actual statements, the proposed do, do not include the amount from the voter approved. That will not show up on these statements because the state didn't get it to them yet. They already printed these things out. Um, we know for a fact that the levy sheets are still being run because the levy sheets that they did last week still didn't have the voter approved part. Lon Mo, we've been in conversations with MDE today. Um, Lon sent an email back, we communicated back and forth, the new voter approved levy. All of this stuff had to get coordinated to get the new numbers based on, so bottom line is they're running a new levy sheet probably today or to, five o'clock today or tomorrow. When the new levy sheet comes out, I'll email you all a copy of, not the whole report, but just that page 31 that shows that total amount. So I'll send you both the one from September that showed a 7.7% increase. And then when you get the new one, expect it to be in double digits because that'll have the new amount. But again, December sixteenth, when we do this stuff, they're still not going to be, the people are not going to see this on their proposed sheets. They're not going to see the actual amount of their taxes until their statements, their actual statements in the spring. So it's going to be one of those levy issues where people are going to say, well, you told me this was going to be my proposed and now the actual amount is much, a few hundred dollars more. And that's an issue with the county. There's nothing we can do about it. But also, a reminder for everybody, it says right on those proposed sheets, your school district was scheduled to hold a referendum at the November general election. If the referendum was approved by the voters, the school district's voter approved property tax for 2020 may be higher than the proposed amount shown on this notice. So a lot of people don't look at the fine print, but it's on there just so that when you get a phone call on March or whenever and somebody says, you know, you lied to us and all that, it's just the timing. This is what always happens when there's voter approved. That's always in November. They gotta get these property tax statements out within two weeks and the state doesn't have the amounts yet. So it is what it is. Okay, so.
Is that calculator still on our webpage if anybody wanted to look?
Yes, I think, I don't think he's taken that down yet.
So we could always direct him to go there.
Exactly. So we can't run anything. This has got to come out from the county. Questions, make sense? Okay, so some things I wanted to just give to you regarding the money part. Um, you can tell we're so frugal with our color printing that the colors are very ugly on this. Um, but, so when we talk about the rating systems, so there's, there's three different ones, Moody's, well, there's three main ones. Of course, the one that we contracted with was Standard and Poor's. So I'm going to give you a copy of, this is our ratings report from Standard and Poor's. Um, let's see. So this is what you spent $29,500 for, okay? This is what it costs to get all those ratings, but you, you'll save a lot of money by having this done. So bottom line, our school district, so if you look at the Standard and Poor's ratings and you'll see on page two of this report that where it says underlying ratings for credit program for each of the four bonds, because notice they're doing all of the bonds, the 2020A, which you'll be approving in January, and then the next three are the 2019A, B, and C. So you're going to approve, December sixteenth is when we should have, um, which, where we'll be going with for those three bonds, the 2019 series. So in the ratings, when it talks about the underlying ratings, that's the school district. So the school district had an A-plus rating. We also qualify to be in the Minnesota pool, the state pool, which is a good thing because then we're covered by state funds if in defaults and all that. Gives us a much higher rating. So notice the long-term rating for the state is a AAA. That's why we want to be part of that state one, to be part of that group because we'll get a higher rating. So when you look at the Standard and Poor's rating system, we're an A-plus, upper medium grade. The state is a AAA, the highest you can go. So we'll get very good rates because we're under a AAA. That's why you're paying for all this because then we can get the best rating possible. And when we're talking about borrowing a total of $40 million, there's a big difference if it's a quarter of a percent. Okay. So when you get time, when you got nothing else to read, go through their full little six-page report. Um, it basically says that, well, we're in a good part of the region because of our location with Farquhar Moorhead and that gives us, you know, it helps our ratings and what else not because we're a very stable potential for growth and such. And of course, now that we approved the bond, of course, now we got a little bit more debt. So you'll see that when I talk about the longer-term prognosis and what else not. But, so I wanted you to have a hard copy of that. All of these documents, um, well, start doing is I have them all in that, remember I said I've got that fiscal one that I keep that we don't have for all public, but I'll start dropping some of these into that bond referendum shared drive that the bird and the admin team have. Any questions about that rating process? Okay, so the rest that I have is basically for the claims part and then operations. So I'll read on the rest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unless you guys have, have questions.
If you have questions.
I've been meeting with Moorhead, we're starting, I sent those of you that are on the, about our December sixth meeting and so that's when we're going to be starting. So Raleigh, Lindsay, Amy, you should have received that. And it won't work for them in the mornings on Fridays, but afternoon it'll work just fine. So the meetings will either be one or 1:30. We're going to try to lock it in for about an hour and a half because I told them the principals have to, by the end of the day, otherwise they're going to be pulling out because they're going to be getting calls from their offices. So we'll try to keep it to an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes as, as long of a time period. Um, otherwise, we're also starting meetings. I met with Brandon and Tamra and we're going to begin meetings every two weeks or monthly for sure between the district administrations of the two school districts. I also put in that folder, if you take, if you happen to look in that referendum one, I believe there's some drawings for the Career Academy. I dropped in there for now. I'm going to move it over to a shared folder afterwards that's just for the Career Academy, but you'll all have access for that. You'll get an email for that new one once we get more documents ready that are just for the Career Academy.
Cool.
That's it.
Okay. Moving on to seven point one, this is looking for the approval of the November 12 regular meeting. So motion by David and Amy, seconded. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under consent agenda, eight point one, under business.
Bills is time around $234,695.61.
Thank you. It's also the student activity bills, DeWorth activity bills, the treasures report is in there, Minnesota liquid asset and extracurricular, we have donation, we have a resignation. Kathy Tigerson will be resigning at the December 20th, will be her last day. Resignation of Dan Morelli, special ed teacher effective November 22nd. And here is Jeannie's retirement. After all the years that she's been in our district, she is going to be incredibly missed.
How many years has she been?
She's been since high school, so she's been 40, 48 years. So how do you replace all of that knowledge?
Congratulations.
So she's gonna just, yeah, absolutely, so.
So she's doing her last Christmas, you know, we always have the goodies and all that on that last day before the Christmas break. And I mean, she's, she's done this since she's been there and this is her last one. So if you get an opportunity to come in that day, um, because, I mean, they do such a nice job with that and, um, if you get a chance, pop in on that Friday, the 20th, because that's when we'll have everything and, and of course, we'll have other send-off time later, but she puts a blasted much effort into that and making all these cookies with her sisters and what else not, it's just amazing.
So looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Raleigh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to nine point one. This is a certified seniority list that is in your board packet. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Lindsay. Anybody have any questions?
I didn't think Mike had been there that long either, but I've been around a lot of times.
Long time.
Maybe 40 years, basically.
All right, there's motion and the second on the table. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine point two, this is the summary of the report of the world's best workforce that we've already heard tonight. Um, do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
David, was there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. It is 7:08, we are moving to go into closed session. Again, this is for consideration of purchasing a property. Um, when we come back, we will summarize that and then close our meeting, close our meeting. Uh, so it's 7:08 and we will, at seven.